Councilor Mule, Councilor Gildam, Mayor Borley.
Here.
Councilor Hobbs, Councilor Mayler.
Here.
Councilor Trapp.
Here.
Councilor Underwood.
Here.
So five present and two excused. Do we have any motions on minutes?
Second.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from August 11th. City Council work session and executive session. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes with five ayes and two ahs.
Did you also say that the one in between, the council meeting?
Yes. I said, uh, city council work session, city council meeting, and city council executive session. At this point, we will, um, open our city council public hearing. And we need to explain this is a right-of-way vacation, public right-of-way vacation for an alley created in minutes addition. And after opening the hearing, we will, the hearing disclosure statement. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to an issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards review criteria for test amendments, text amendments. Declarations by city council, personal bias. Does anyone have any personal bias prejudice or prejudgment of the facts to such a degree that an official, one of us is incapable of making an objective decision based on the merits of this case? No? Mary Beth? Conflict of interest. Has any member of the council or immediate family have any financial or interests in the application that has been disclosed?
No.
No.
Ex parte information. The council is bound to base their decision on information received in the public hearing and what is presented in testimony. If a member of the council has talked with an applicant or information from outside the public hearing, it needs to be shared at the time so everyone in the audience has an opportunity to be aware of it and the rest of the councils is aware of it. In that way, it can be rebutted and can be discussed openly. Does anybody have ex parte information in any way?
No.
No.
Staff report.
Thank you. So included in your packet tonight, starting on page nine, is a staff report for the first proposed street vacation. And I will just hit some of the key points on it and happy to answer any questions that need in. So page nine just gives you the list of when key actions took place with the application. Pages ten and eleven give a summary of some of the history of the infrastructure that's there at the site with the proposed street vacation. And the part that I will spend most time on tonight is page twelve. And I'll just briefly go over some testimony that was submitted. The first one that we'll go over is from a pitch back from our engineering technician, Cindy. She mentions that there is a, there's a few recommendations from the engineering department. The first is to, as a condition of approval, provide a private access easement to lot thirty-six hundred. And I would point out that the map is, um, a inch one feet. At the property in the northwestern corner of that map, you will see ten twenty-nine Dandina Street, lot thirty-six hundred. Certainly has a residential dwelling on it and the driveway is accessed by the alleyway. The proposed street vacation for the alley is a twenty-foot vacation. A portion of the property that would go to the property owner at ten twenty-nine Dandina Street is only ten feet. So engineering is requesting a private easement for the full twenty so that person has room to maneuver when they're pulling out of the car from that driveway that's existing. Two other recommendations that come from our engineering department is a public works utility. It's recommended for the existing sewer main, existing power, and future water main that may go in that alleyway. And possibly a future franchise utility easement may be required at this point. But those are some things that council should consider in their approval process. Testimony that was submitted since the last time I spoke before you was from Bruce and Monica Hobbs. And they've spoken favor of the access easement for the property at ten twenty-nine Dandina Street. Briefly go over the findings and most of these are just to point out how the state requirements were met for this application. Finding number one, a legal notice was given by publication in our local newspaper, The New Era, on August 12th and August 19th, two weeks prior to the hearing, as stated by state law. Legal notice was also posted at the site at both ends of the alleyway. Legal notice was posted in some of the most public buildings in the city, city hall, the library, and post office. Point out that the planning commission did have a public hearing on the street vacation on August 3rd and did recommend that the street vacation be approved with the condition that I mentioned for the access utility easement. All the owners that bought the street vacation have submitted their consent. And those have been provided for you and are on page twenty through twenty-two, saying that they agree and support the proposed street vacation. And to this point, there has been no written objections to the street vacations from any members of the public. And the title to the street vacation, and it shows how it would be reallocated to the surrounding property owners on the map on page nineteen, is according to state law. With that, I will turn it over to you if you have any other questions about the application.
Did, uh, on your engineering technician, is there, it says that you want a easement for public utilities through their, is there natural gas and foam or is there any buried in that area?
So the franchise utility easement is not there currently. They are recommending that a future easement be applied as a condition in case they need to go through that.
Okay, so that's good.
Any more questions or staff? Anything further?
Back on that application.
At this time, we will accept the applicant's testimony, which is ours, and the proponent's testimony if anybody's in opposition. And are the proponents in the opposition, then any neutral testimony, neither for nor against, and then any rebuttal in the same order as the testimony. So is there anybody in favor of the vacation? I'll call three times. Anybody in favor? Any in favor? Any opponent? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Okay. Anybody neither opposed nor in favor? Anybody opposed nor in favor? Okay. Any opposed nor in favor? Because there was no testimony on any of it, then we will not have any rebuttal. We will close the public hearing at seven forty. And we'll have discussion amongst council. We have several different motions that can be made either to approve, deny, remand back, or continue.
And you do have companion legislation later on your agenda. You could, if you'd like to defer your discussions deliberations at that time, but you can also do that now. But recognize that an approval of the vacation is codified by ordinance. So there's an ordinance that is there. Should that be the choice of the council move forward and you went, go ahead and begin your adoption proceedings on that ordinance? That is, if you choose to move forward with the approval. And as you indicated, there are other options, remand, place additional conditions or anything. Just suggest that council make any of their decisions based on your deliberations and the findings of fact that you've heard on this particular application and knowing that you have, I think, two more to follow on similers. So your choice to either discuss and deliberate now or later on during your ordinance, your legislative portion of your agenda.
And make sure that you do mention findings of fact and hearing.
Testimony received.
And testimony received during the hearing. So is there a, any motion or do you want to move forward to do the next one?
So Courtney, you were saying that we can do all three of them at the same time?
Well, you have to do three separate.
Okay, so, well, I'm just asking, do we need to vote on this one now or?
Well, we don't have to vote on it now, we can go and vote it down here.
Okay.
But we still have three separate ones that we have to do.
So you've had your public hearing and now it's time to do deliberations and you can either deliberate now. But knowing that, you know, a decision to move forward would require the legislative activity or you could deliberate right before then and if you choose not to approve then there's just no legislative or no ordinance that would be.
Right, but there wouldn't be, if we did it now either, then there would be, we'd scratch that ordinance.
I don't see no reason why not to approve it. I do like the easement to apply with access easement.
All right, so that would be part of the motion to approve with the, with the easement as defined by staff and with findings of fact and with testimony heard.
Is that motion? We have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Sorry, any of these land use things have to be, we have to make sure that everything's done. We don't do them all the time, so we have to make sure that everything's stated correctly. At this time, we would open the public hearing for the right-of-way vacation. V fifteen oh two, public right-of-way vacation of the area of Seventh, Second Avenue. We'll open each, we'll open the hearing. The hearing disclosure, I have to read again. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to an issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the review criteria for text amendments. Declarations by the city council. Does anybody have personal bias?
No.
Uh, any conflict of interest?
No.
Okay, any ex parte information? All right, staff report.
Thank you. So first and last, the last application, this is also the city applicant for a proposed street vacation. It says second, that's the official name on the road, although it's mostly trees right now. And the proposed street vacation is also fifty-ninth Avenue between Poplar and Dandina. And then actually above some of the Boston right now, just to give you some context of where that's at. So the staff report is laid out in a similar fashion on page twenty-three. There's notes when hearing notices were posted and actions that have taken place with the application. Twenty-four includes a public infrastructure summary from our engineering staff. And I will bring your attention to the bottom of page twenty-five and talk about the findings here. So the only issue that comes up with this particular street vacation is, if you turn to the map on page twenty-seven, if the street was vacated, then lot nine hundred and one would be landlocked essentially. So staff recommendation is to have an access easement and also utility easement so that if that piece of land was sold in the future, that they could access that by a private easement and also having facilities to serve that property as it's undeveloped right now.
So the easement would come off fifty-ninth?
Correct.
And would be half the distance probably of that?
Yeah, so the street vacation is for thirty feet and our design standard for easement is twenty-five. So that would be the recommended bit. Well, then we had Lena Ellis did speak at the planning commission hearing that was held on August 3rd. And she said she would support a twenty-five foot easement to access the lot. Lena Ellis is the property owner for tax parcel one thousand and nine oh one, so both of those are her property right now.
Okay, that's, my next question was going to be, is that going to cause a problem with lot one thousand?
No, and she's actually going to be coming into the planning department to do some property line adjustments to solve this, in the future make that lot more solvable. And so she's aware of it and also in support of that access easement to solve the short-term problem and probably future solutions for that.
Are we going to need any utility easements?
If that was to be developed, there would need to, as it is laid out right now, an easement for utilities. Staff recommendation to have those two conditions applied to it, just in case the company line adjustments did not happen.
So the easement and the property and the utility.
And access easement.
An access easement.
So basically the proposal number two.
Correct. So again, I'll just point out the findings, and this is how we have met state and local law. The legal notice was also posted in The New Era on August 12th and 19th, two weeks. infected groups put fires to this hearing. On the top of page twenty-six, legal notice for this application is posted at city hall, the library, and post office, as they're the most public places in Sweet Home. Legal notice was posted on the site after the proposed street vacation. The planning commission did hold a public hearing on August 3rd and did recommend the street vacation with the two conditions that we just spoke about, the access and utility easement to lot nine oh one. All the owners that bought the property have consented to the property, to the street vacation and the consent forms are included in your packet. And as I mentioned, Lena Ellis did testify in support of the proposed street vacation with the conditions that we also mentioned. There has been no written objections to the street vacation filed in the city by any owner of real property in the city. And the title to the street vacation is for the state law. I will wrap up the staff report unless you have any other questions.
Now, is tax law six oh eight, that maybe landlocked also?
It is not, so those dashed lines represent former property lines, that is actually only one partial amount.
It's just one, okay.
Yeah, so they have access up on fifty-nine.
Any questions? Let's go into testimony. Proponent's testimony. Anybody in favor of the vacation?
Yes.
Move forward, name and address, please.
Run Hathaway, fifteen twenty-three, fifty-ninth Avenue, Sweet Home.
So which law are you?
Sixth Circuit.
Sixth Circuit, okay.
If someone on the north side of the vacation area, proposed vacation. I just wanted to speak in favor of the vacation and in agreement with staff report and the recommendations of number two, I would respectfully ask that the council approve the vacation. It's supposed to trees, get a question, I'll be. It's supposed to trees and it's unapproved right now and doesn't appear to ever be improved by the city. So it's a good chance for the two property owners to get it and do something with it or leave it as trees as it is now, which we kind of like.
Thank you. Any questions? Do we have any pro, proponents? Do we have any opponents? Do we have any opponents? Do we have anybody that's neither for nor against? Anybody neither for nor against? Anybody neither for nor against? Rebuttal? We only had proposed, or four. So unless we have anybody in the four category, we will close the public hearing at seven fifty-one. And we'll go back to our discussion and decision-making process. We have the four different motions that we can make with the findings of fact and testimony heard with the exceptions of, with the addition of staff report to do the two vacations.
Do you have a motion to approve that proposed vacation with conditions?
With findings of fact.
Findings of fact.
And hearing, uh, the, here, uh, testimony heard. It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes with five ayes and two ahs. Okay, one more. Public hearing, zone text amendment fifteen dash oh one. The city of Sweet Home requests text amendments to the Sweet Home municipal code eight point oh four nuisances. And this is a regular, is this land use law? We have to go over this one again. For all those wishing to test, I have, sorry, I have to read this officially. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise the issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the review criteria for text amendments. declarations by council, does anybody have any personal bias?
No.
No.
No. Uh, conflict of interest?
No.
Ex parte information? Okay. Staff report.
Thank you. So we did talk about this application on July fourteenth and it wasn't managed to the planning commission taking consideration of the public's advice. And so I will repeat the whole staff report, I'll just skip ahead to the parts that are new. So again, on the first page, on page thirty-four of your packet, it's just a few days, one focus was posted and one actions to place for the application. And just to remind you, the request is for text amendments to the fence code. The different chapters of those are in August there, on the top of page thirty-five. Some new public comments that was received on the planning commission that was held on August 3rd, Ron Hathaway spoke in favor of the proposed text amendments to the fence code. Hathaway has adopted the city council keeps the permit requirement so that people know what is required of them. And he said he attended the city council meeting that should place on July fourteenth and which subject was discussed and he felt the general consensus was to waive the permit fee, which he agreed with, and to strike the last sentence on the repair portion of the proposed text amendment. But findings, I will just run through those briefly. The planning commission initiated text amendments to the fence code. And that was code section eight point zero four in the nuisance section, seventeen zero four in the title purpose and definitions, seventeen point oh eight, general development standards, seventeen point twelve, administration and enforcement of the fence code. And this started on December first, two thousand fourteen. The planning commission held several work sessions on the text amendments and these occurred on December first, two thousand fourteen, January fifth, February second, and April sixth. Notice of the public hearing on said text amendment was submitted to the Department of Land Use and Conservation as required by law on April twenty-first. The number of page thirty-six on the top. Notice that the public hearings were posted in The New Era and these occurred on April twenty-second, June twenty-fourth, July twenty-second, August twelfth. Notice was also posted in some of our public places in the city, city hall, the library, and post office. No written objection to said text amendment have been filed in the city up to this date. The planning commission did recommend a proposed text amendment to the, if during their public hearing held on May fourth. As I mentioned, on July sixteenth, it was remanded to the planning commission to reconsider adding a fence permit and also a fee. Although I will mention that the fee is a separate issue from the text amendment. So what we're discussing today is just the text amendments and the fee could be discussed at a later date if the council chooses to. Ron Hathaway did testify and I did mention what his testimony was previously. The planning commission in the last hearing that was held on August 3rd recommended filing changes, leaving the fence permit process in place, perhaps waiving the fee, and having the deco section about repairs to be as follows. Prior to deconstruction or reconstruction of a fence, a permit for the proposed work shall be obtained for the city, which removes that portion that mentioned the twenty-five percent of what was a repair. And then of course, we're holding our second public hearing for course and council today. In the new business section, there is a request for council action to consider proposed fence code ordinance. The ordinance is submitted with a staff report and is also listed in the new business section under your comfort packet today. And I can just briefly touch on it, it looks like a lot of pages. Most of it is just adding clarity to the code, doesn't make any major changes. The only major change that happened in the fence code was to increase the allowed fence height from six feet to seven feet on mostly interior fence lines where the higher fence is allowed. Most of the other one was just to add clarity, it was unclear in particular lot configurations on how the fence code was supposed to be applied. For example, a flat lot that has a small stretch of land that goes into a larger piece, as the code read, would have to have your fence set back twenty feet before you could do an increase in fence height. And to apply that practically, I don't know, situations didn't make a lot of sense. So those were some of the things that were corrected in the fence code to just make it more user-friendly and so that it applied in those very specific situations. Happy to answer any questions that you might have about changes that took place or are.
So the planning commission recommended the removal of the fence permit fee. Is that something that you say we have to vote on later?
Yes.
We have to address that later, is that correct?
So what, before today in the ordinance, it's protected in it, a change to a fee would be a separate action.
Okay. It's in, it's in another ordinance in our.
Resolution.
Our resolution, but we have, we have to change that resolution.
Right. Yeah, and I, and I think, you know, what you have here in your proposed ordinance that would codify the text amendment, it just says obtain a permit and then by separate action, council could either continue with a permit fee, strike the permit fee, or say that, you know, let it, but the recommendation from the planning commission was that there be a permit process, but not putting in the ordinance a fee associated with it.
And the discussion behind that was the permit process is more or less an educational process where folks were introduced to the code and how it applied to their property. And they thought that was an important step in the process.
And Goldberg, one more time on the repair.
Yes, so.
It reads a little bit different than.
It does. So what constituted as a repair was not clear. So there was a percentage to say if you're repairing twenty-five percent or more, that would trigger a fence permit. So anything twenty-five, so if you're just replacing a panel, you wouldn't necessarily need a permit for twenty-five percent or more. Council recommended that city council take, the planning commission took another look at that and they decided to remove that twenty-five percent to just say that a fence permit is required. So it would be a standard amount of the standard.
Do you, in your discussion down there, do you mean that it is for the construction of a fence or is it for the reconstruction of a fence as in repair? So do they have to come in for a repair and get a permit? Any, any repair gets you a permit now, is that what you're saying?
That's how it would read now.
So it, so it's say, construction and reconstruction also. And that was what you're hoping to.
Okay.
And that is section five, the draft ordinance that is included in the package on the bottom of page forty-one. It says no person shall construct any fence or wall without perceiving a permit.
And so then how are you going to get away from the fee? Do you have to come before the council and have them waive that, or we can, how's that gonna work?
So council could choose by resolution to remove the twenty-dollar fence fee.
Okay.
Probably.
Because it's in a resolution, it has to be reconsidered.
So it'd just be a separate action.
It's a new plan, it's a new issue.
Yes.
There was one other part here that says any repair, reconstruction, or improvement of a structure, the cost of which equals or exceeds fifty percent of the market value of the structure either. Can you explain that?
Yeah, so we're in the definition section, there is a section. Yeah, so that one doesn't necessarily apply right to the fence permit. But it would take the opportunity to do an ordinance and clean up some of these definitions so they make sense in other situations.
Okay, it didn't, it didn't make a lot of sense with fence ordinance.
Yeah, yeah. So some of the definitions in that section were cleaned up just so that they apply better in our code. So this would apply to a different section, not to fence. Same with the plan development, and there was two structure definitions, so we've taken out one, so we've got one. Plan development unit was not defined previously, although it is an action that takes place. So those, for some of the changes, such as place in the definition section.
Okay, I wanted to make sure it goes.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
Any further questions, staff? So at this time, we will continue on through our testimony. And we will ask for anybody in favor of the proposed changes? Anybody in favor of the proposed changes? Anybody in favor of the proposed changes? Anybody in opposition to the proposed changes? In opposition to proposed changes? Anybody in opposition to proposed changes? Do that three times, because that's Robert Rule says that you're supposed to do it three times.
I thought there was a lack of.
No. Robert's rule says you're supposed to say it three, three times. Nobody in, that's either in for or in opposition of the application? Anybody neither for nor in opposition of the application? Either anybody for nor in opposition of the application? And seeing no testimony, we'll have no rebuttal. And we'll close the public hearing at eight oh, eight oh four. Again, we have a little bit different here with this, this, how do you wanna?
So it is listed in the new business. Forced to the city council packet today. Whether a request for council action and proposed amendments. Do you have a chance to discuss it now, or are we going to move this exception?
What do you think? Let's see, there's all the council's. Well, most efficient is probably do this now and then we just vote on the resolution. Mr. Mayor, I was making a motion to approve the text amendments as proposed, facts binding, test binding. It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes with five ayes and two ahs. Okay. Nothing further under old business. Recognition and hering petitions, do we have anybody that wants to bring anything before council at this time? Okay, would you bring it forward and name the address?
Lynn, again, eighteen forty twelfth avenue. Hi. I just came to speak for a few minutes about the idea of proposing an ordinance for Sweet Home against public drinking. And at our public safety meeting, attorney Snyder had a dilemma between state law and laws that have already been passed in other cities. So that was an obstacle in the way. I asked a neutral third party to get, to find and hire an attorney who has expertise in administrative law. And a friend of mine did that for me. And we got a letter here from the attorney with her opinion and analysis of that state law four three zero point four oh two. And I just wanted to provide this additional information to the city council and the public safety board people, okay? Okay, thank you.
We're having a, just to tag on to that. It's on our agenda before this came up even, that we wanted a public safety meeting after the next meeting. So that's what we're gonna to discuss.
Yes.
You're right, right.
Yeah.
Anybody else with, or anything for, for council? Okay. Is sunshine here?
We have a rush coming in here tonight.
I don't see anybody, so we'll just hold off on that until our next meeting, I guess. Request for council action appointment to all hazard mitigation committee.
Yes, you do have on page forty-two of your agenda packet, request for consideration by the council. This particular matter would be for consideration of appointment of Edith Wilcox to the city's all hazard mitigation planning committee. Ms. Wilcox currently serves on the planning commission. She's also expressed a desire to serve on the all hazard mitigation planning committee, where we currently have three vacant positions. The term of appointment, should council choose to appoint, Ms. Wilcox would be for one year. And so that would be a term to expire August twenty-fifth of two thousand sixteen. I do believe the applicant is here, if council had any questions. Ms. Wilcox is in attendance if you wanted to add any questions about the information she submitted on her, on her application.
I think Ms. Wilcox took an excellent job on her planning mission. With that said, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Edith Wilcox to the all hazard mitigation planning committee with a term to expire eight twenty-five, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes with five ayes and two ahs.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Request for council action?
You, in essence, you have the next three items on your agenda based on your public hearings that we've held before and based upon the motion that, motions that were made for approval of the two runaway vacations and the proposal for the text amendments. That our CAs are there for primarily for information. Unless there's opposition, and if there is to moving forward with those, then you would take those up under the first readings of your ordinance. Once all those ordinances, before we ran in their entirety tonight on the first reading, if that's entered into your legislation, council action, so.
I would take our, our discussion and our vote earlier as a request to move those forward to first read unless there's an objection. So we're down to request for council action, Senate Bill four sixty.
Yes. And with the pleasure of council, I would defer to city attorney Snyder. Present that particular, this is based upon opportunities out of most recent legislative action in regards to recreational marijuana.
The RCA just explains that there's a date coming up of October first, two thousand fifteen, that dispensaries may sell limited marijuana retail product. And that is a defined term under the Senate Bill four sixty. And Senate Bill is on page seventy-five. So it explains that, and basically it also in that Senate Bill, it explains that the city can prohibit that from, by ordinance, from beginning on October first, two thousand fifteen. And then it basically just runs until December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, then other things take over from there. So this is, this would be ordinance, it would be for the prohibition of that sales from the medical marijuana dispensaries during that time period.
Do, at this point, we would need a motion to move this to first read. You have a second?
Second.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion will, or this will be moved down to first read, our ordinance bill. Request for council action, proposed ordinance amending public park regulations.
So you do have a request for consideration, as you're aware, there's been some discussion and recommendations made from both your parks committee as well as the public safety committee in regards to proposed changes to public park regulations. Been discussion, like I said, at the parks committee meeting. And primarily to limit or restrict when and where tobacco and or alcohol can be consumed in public park spaces. And planning services manager Laura can speak to the RCA if you have any questions. Currently, what it would do is place a requirement that any consumption of alcohol in public parks or areas designated as same would be by permit only. With the permit issuance being at the staff level with the understanding that any type of public service of alcohol requires, not only would require city approval, but also would require OLCC approval on certainly any sale, just like, for example, when events like the Jamboree operate, not only do, would they get permission from the city for use of alcohol or consumption of alcohol, but then OLCC. Thought being that if somebody requests, for example, to use the Weller Bridge for a wedding reception and they want to have champagne to toast the bride and groom, that could be permitted, because it is in a park if this ordinance moves forward, that could be permitted at staff level, saying yes, by, by permit, you're allowed to have champagne at your wedding reception or that sort of thing as long as there's no public service or sale or that sort of thing, which would require an OLCC permit. Similarly, is the issue of regulating smoking, primarily smoking in the park area for public convenience and health concerns. And the amendments to the ordinance would allow designation of smoking areas in the park areas and spaces to be designated. And the discussion at the parks committee was to designate areas away from where children concentrate around play equipment and all likelihood designate potentially the parking lot areas as the areas where folks could smoke if they so chose to while attending or enjoying the city's parks. So that's the, I think the nuts and bolts and outline of it. And I know Laura's staff's both, well, staff's the Parks Commission and then Chief Lynn, who's staff's the Public Safety Commission, can provide any more information on those as they've gone through leading up to the recommend, recommendation by both bodies, both the park and the public safety committee to consider adoption, which would amend your park facility and public space rules as, as indicated, so.
Ms. Chair of the committee, what was your?
Oh, yeah, we discussed that, we, this, we agreed with this policy. And I know that they discussed it, we discussed it before we changed. And I think I'm correct in saying that that was kind of a decision that we made.
Yes, it started with the Parks Board and they had about six different meetings on it and then it moved to the Public Safety Committee in the last, I think, July fourteenth.
Yeah. And we discussed it a lot.
All right, so do we have a motion to move this on to the ordinance? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Request for council action, continuation of the public private partnership with the on-line.
Yes, you do have for consideration, pages eighty-seven through one twelve, information there in regards to consideration for council to continue and or amend your existing service contract with CH two in Hill for the operation of water and wastewater treatment public services. That recommendation came forward based upon discussions at the work session that was held on the matter and a indication by council that they would be interested in entertaining a renewal option with different, slightly different terms as stipulated. You have a copy of the proposed amendments or continuation document for that particular matter in your council packet. Primarily be looking at a fifteen-year extension with similar provisions for termination as were in your current contract. Probably the primary difference based on the discussions between council and representative of CH two in Hill was the capping of cost increases. Currently, that's at four percent and the proposed addition or amendment extension, cap those at three percent and also includes the cost savings as were presented during the work session for early renewal.
So is there any issue with the, you see, with the, I guess, the, yeah. To the agreement?
Uh, no, there are representatives of CH two that can speak to that. They were responsive to the request of the council during the work session. Responded within a week with essentially the requested changes to the document. Brought it, brought that forward. the staff has brought that forward, and if you have any questions, Public Works Director Adams, myself, or like I said, representatives of CH2 should be able to address that, but in essence, the extension agreement captures the requests or suggested changes that were made by council during the work session in regards to continuing that agreement. As you know, you have still a year left in the current agreement, but by renewing or extending now, there is an incentive from CH2 for cost reduction in the current year's renewal, and of course, the extension of the lowering of the maximum annual increase from 4% to 3%, also recognizing in the past that for most of the nine years, they have not requested the maximum amount of increase that's allowed, so.
I didn't see any difference in the total numbers in the back, was I wrong, the discounts?
The discount is stipulated on Section E1.
It's the same as what?
No, it reflects the reduction for the first year for 2015, 2016.
Right, but it was the same as what we had given last time, it's the same reduction that we got during the first proposal, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, oh.
I didn't see any difference in that.
The other change that was discussed again was the capping at the annual at 3% versus 4%.
Yes. Correct. The 3% and 4%, 3% is back in the back, I believe, where is that? It's right here, on the E, point 1, point 2 compensation, 106. It's, the 4% is crossed out, 3% is in there.
Yes, you do have per request that track changes for your review that hopefully made it easy for you to compare the proposed extension to your existing agreement, and that's as spelled out there with strike through and underline for changes.
Any more questions from the council?
So what this is, is this is asking us to make a decision on either a no extension, five-year, 10-year, or 15-year, is that correct?
Yes. With the different numbers being there.
And did we ever determine, I don't recall, whether it was financially viable for the city to take operation of that plant? I don't remember if that conversation ever took place. You know, we were talking about different scenarios and whatnot, and I don't recall that.
I didn't want to take it beyond, any further discussion beyond that meeting that night.
Okay.
Yeah, at your work session, that topic did come up, I think Public Works Director Adams provided some rough estimates based on the costs of assuming the same level of staffing back in 2006, and then moving that forward based on known increases that we have had in both wage and benefit packages. I think you provided numbers that are in your minutes for that, but those were estimates, but staff did not pursue any further based on discussions at the work session.
That answers my question, because I knew that there were estimates in there, but I didn't know if there was anything that was going to go any farther, because I didn't see it even offering.
My recollection was the estimates that were provided by staff were in the range of $447,000 annually to $567,000, I think, and of course, that would, the wide range would depend on whether the staff members in that operation, which would be under, are at a single, meaning single employee, and a lower level of benefits provision per our collective bargaining agreement, or a family at a higher per capita benefits provision, again, all subject to the collective bargaining agreements that would be effect and would cover those employees, so.
Well, but if I'm not mistaken, we were giving the, given the formula with seven employees, and they only use five, is that not correct?
Correct.
You gave us a figure for seven employees, and they use five presently.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so your numbers were a little bit skewed in the fact that you, if they can run it with five, we should be able to run it with five too?
No.
No.
Why?
What we had was, we had seven because we needed, because it's a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week operation in two plants.
I understand that.
They currently have five. Here, I believe that they have resources for more than.
I understand that, yeah.
Not one of them.
But I use seven because that's what we had prior to this partnership.
Well, the people who questioned that, and including myself, is that they run it with five, why couldn't we run it with five? Because the water treatment plant is not ran with a person there for 40 hours a week, and they have facilities to take care of the call, and I understand what he, what he said, I completely understand that, and I understand the use of the other facilities and the other people, but I think we were a little bit, not, don't take this wrong, but we were a little bit misled in that, in that we were discussing seven people instead of five, and I was a little bit of a.
Right, with an understanding that we didn't have the new water plant before they were here, so.
That's correct, I understand, okay.
All we had was what we had.
I think some of that comes into they do all the testing over on the other side, because we don't do it here anymore.
I understand the differences, I'm not just getting mad, but I wanted to know.
Yeah, that's all I had was the history of the seven, so.
Oh, one more question. So if they, if we hired five people, or however many we needed, why did they have to be in the union?
Because.
Co-shop?
It's already a negotiated position, it's in the collective bargaining agreement as we currently have.
Well, they're not in the union.
They're.
I understand. I'm just going to say.
Those positions are in the collective bargaining agreement, if you were to choose to not and try and exclude those, it would be subject to the public and both employees' collective bargaining agreements, and I don't know that the city could prevail in saying those positions were not going to be.
All right, so, do we have a motion to move this down to, the motion would be to, on one of the specific?
I think you have a sidebar, you want to do 10 or 15.
We'd be on one of the specific items.
It's considered $9,000, if we go to 15. Well, and the substantial savings that we've been out over the 15 years is pretty substantial, so, and knowing the fact that we have a right to open this up again anytime during this contract, and say we want to look at a different options and all those things, and so, anyway, I have a motion to that.
Now, if we were to do that, would there be, let's just play it out, would there be a penalty?
Five percent.
Five percent.
Fifty thousand, no?
Yes.
How much?
Fifty thousand, you're already making it fifty thousand.
Correct. For an early termination, yes, there's a 5% penalty, and I think that's a six-month, six-month notification requirement for demobilization, so.
With all that said, I think probably a 15-year extension is most responsible as far as the city's concerned, so do I.
Do you want to move that forward as a motion to all of the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like a motion to move forward, 15-year extension to 2031 with a 1% base rate decrease to 2015, 2016.
I'll second that.
Okay. Those in favor, by roll call, please. Aye.
Councilor Hobbs? Councilor Mahler?
Aye.
Councilor Cox?
Aye.
Councilor Underwood?
Aye.
Councilor Engle?
Aye.
Councilor Goodwin?
Motion passes with five ayes and two abs. Legislation, first reading, ordinance bill number seven.
Ordinance bill number seven for 2015, ordinance number, an ordinance vacating the public right-of-way identified as an area of land in the northeast one quarter of Section 31 Township 13 South Range 1 East, Willamette, Redian, City of Sweet Home, Lynn County, Oregon. Whereas the city council has initiated vacation proceedings on its own motion on July 14, 2015, and has provided notice as required by ORS Chapter 271, and whereas the planning commission was given an opportunity to enter testimony, and at their August 3rd, 2015 hearing, the commission recommended vacation of said public right-of-way, and whereas no substantial effect to the market value of the property has been identified, the City of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section 1, the public right-of-way in the City of Sweet Home, Lynn County, Oregon is vacated as depicted on map titled Alley Vacation Exhibit and described as follows. An area of land in the northeast one quarter of Section 31 Township 13 South Range 1 East, Willamette, Redian, City of Sweet Home, Lynn County, Oregon, being more particularly described as follows. The entire 20-foot public alley platted on Minis addition to Sweet Home, Oregon County Survey Number 1298-A, lying north of the San Am Highway right-of-way and south of the Nandina Street right-of-way, platted as Hawthorne Street. As area of land lying west of the center line of the 20-foot alley platted on Minis addition to Sweet Home, Oregon, recorded as county survey number 1298A, south of Nandina Street right-of-way, platted as Hawthorne Sheet, north of easterly projection of the north line of Lot 10 in said subdivision, and east of the line of Lot 7 in said subdivision, together with the following. The portion of said 20-foot alley lying east of said center line, projection of the south line of Lot 11 in said subdivision. An area of land lying west of the east line of the 20-foot alley platted in Minis addition to Sweet Home, Oregon, recorded as county survey 1298A, south of the east portion of the north line of Lot 10 in said subdivision, north of the north line is San Am US 20, and east of the east line of Lot 10 in said subdivision. An area of land lying east of the center line of the 20-foot alley platted and on Minis addition to Sweet Home, Oregon, recorded as county survey number 1298A, south of the westway projection of the south line of Lot 6 in said subdivision, north of the westway projection, south line of Lot 11 in said subdivision, and west of the west line of Lot 11 in said subdivision. Section 2, the city recorder shall file with the county clerk a certified copy of this ordinance, with copies also filed with the county assessor and county surveyor as required by ORS Chapter 271, passed by the council and approved by the mayor this blank day of blank 2015. It's going to get worse, I can tell you. We haven't gotten minutes in seconds west of the primordium yet, and they're coming.
If there's no objection, we will move that to second reading on September, September 14th, September 15th. September 15th. First reading ordinance bill number eight for 2015.
Ordinance bill number eight, 2015, ordinance number, an ordinance vacating the public right-of-way identified as an area of land 60 feet in width, located in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 27 Township 13 South Range 1 East, Willamette, Redian, City of Sweet Home, Lynn County. Whereas the city council has initiated vacation proceedings on its own motion on July 14th, and has had notice provided as required by ORS Chapter 271, and whereas the planning commission was given an opportunity to enter testimony, and at their August 3rd, 2015 meeting, the commission recommended vacation of said right-of-way, and whereas testimony has been received of said proposed vacation, consider it and address, and whereas no substantial effect to the market value of the property has been identified, now the City of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section 1, the all public right-of-way in the City of Sweet Home, Lynn County, Oregon is vacated as depicted on map titled Partial Street Vacation and described as follows. An area of land 30 feet in width, located in the northeast corner, the southeast corner of Section 27 Township 13 South Range 1 East, Willamette, Redian, City of Sweet Home, Lynn County, Oregon, being more particular, described as follows. Beginning at northwest corner of Lot 1, Block 12, Shoals addition to Foster, Oregon, thence north, 9 degrees, 5 minutes, 0 seconds west, a distance of 30.35 feet to the center line of Second Avenue, thence along the said center line, north 89 degrees, 30 feet, 30 minutes, 0 seconds east, a distance of 74.88 feet to a point, thence southerly along the extended east line of said Lot 1, a distance of 30 feet to the northeast corner of said Lot, thence along the north line of said Lot 1, south 89 degrees, 34 minutes, 0 seconds west, a distance of 70.09 feet to the point of beginning. Beginning at northwest corner of Lot 12, Block 12, Shoals addition, Foster, Oregon, thence northerly along the extended west line of said Lot 2, a distance of 30 feet to the center line of Second Avenue, thence along said center line, north 89 degrees, 34 minutes, 0 seconds east, a distance of 102.58 feet to the point at the easterly terminus of said Second Avenue, thence south 30 degrees, 15 minutes, 32 seconds east, a distance of 34.58 feet to the northeast corner of Lot 3, Block 12, Shoals addition, thence along the north line of said Lot 3 and Lot 2, south 89 degrees, 34 minutes, 0 seconds west, a distance of 120 feet to the point of beginning. Beginning at the southwest corner of Lot 14, Block 10, Shoals addition, Foster, Oregon, thence along the south line of Lots 14, 13, and 12, Block 10, Shoals addition, north 89 degrees, 34 minutes, 0 seconds east, a distance of 164.82 feet to the southeast corner of Lot 12, Block 10, Shoals addition, thence south 30 degrees, 15 minutes, 32 seconds east, a distance of 34.58 feet to the east terminus of Second Avenue at center line, thence along said center line, south 89 degrees, 34 minutes, 0 seconds west, a distance of 177.46 feet to a point on the easterly right-of-way of 59th Avenue, thence along said 59th Avenue, north 9 degrees, 5 minutes, 0 seconds west, a distance of 30.35 feet to the point of beginning. Section 2, the city recorder shall file with the city clerk a certified copy of this ordinance, with copies also filed with the county assessor and county surveyor as required by ORS Chapter 271, passed by the council and approved by the mayor this blank day of blank 2015. That is the reason we do very few land use hearings.
I forgot to ask a question. Is that the property with the timber on it?
What's that?
Is that the property with the timber on it?
It's just a tree.
Just after America, we logged that first.
No, by law, the benefit of those.
I understand.
Okay, so that will move on to second reading on the 8th of September. I'm sorry, I can't see that part. First reading ordinance bill number nine for 2014, or 15.
Okay, this one's a long one, I'll start off, and then I will defer to City Attorney on Page 116. Ordinance bill number nine, 2015, ordinance number, an ordinance amending Sweet Home Municipal Code Title 8 entitled 17, Fens Code Provisions, City of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section 1, Sweet Home Municipal Code 78.04.08 entitled fences, is amended to read as follows. All fences and walls, including but not limited to chain link, wood, brick, and ancillary construction, shall be kept in good repair, sound structural condition, and shall provide a neat appearance in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. No fences allowed to be, come, or remain in a condition of disrepair, including but not limited to noticeable leaning, missing slats, broken supports. At all times, fences and walls shall be kept free from graffiti, undergrowth, weeds, and other unsightly manners. Section 2, Sweet Home Municipal Code 16, Section 17.04.030 entitled definitions amended read for the following definitions listed as follows. Fence, any permanent partitioned structure, gate erected as dividing market barrier enclosure, including hedges or living bushes or shrubs encircling either wholly or any portion of the area front, each linear edge of property along the property line abutting a street, or a private access way, hedge, or row of bushes, or small trees planted close together which form a barrier, enclosure, or boundary in the front yard or side yard, livestock, and the animals of the bovine species, horses, mules, asses, sheep, goats, and swans. livestock, any animals of the bovine species, horses, mules, asses, sheep, goats, and swine; lot, a unit of land created by subdivision of land intended as unit for the purpose whether immediate or future, or of transfer of ownership and/or for development. Lot area, total horizontal area within the lot lines of a lot, lot line, a recorded boundary of a lot, lot line front, a lot line, or a segment of a lot line that abuts a street on a corner lot, a front, lot line is the shortest of the lot lines that abut a street. If two or more street lot lines are of equal length, then the city manager or designee shall choose which lot line is to be front. However, a through lot has two front lot lines regardless of whether the street lot lines are of equal or unequal length of the lot lines. Okay. Lot line interior, the lot line separating two lots, lot line rear, the lot line that is opposite, ammost distance from the front lot line, in the case of irregular triangular or other shaped lots, aligned ten feet in length within the lot parallel to and at a maximum distance from the front lot line. Lot line side, a lot line that is neither a front or rear lot line. Lot line street side, a lot line that is both a side lot, excuse me, and a street lot line on a corner lot, the longer lot line which abuts a street is a side street lot line. There's still more lines.
Lot through, a lot that has frontage on two streets and where the front, the lot frontages do not intersect, planned unit development, PUD. A type of development and regulatory process that permits a developer to meet overall community density and land use goals without being bound by existing building requirements. Private street, a street which is privately owned and maintained. Structure, anything that is built or constructed, an emphasis or building of any kind, or any piece of work artificially built up or composed apart, joined together in some definite manner. Substantial improvements. Number one, any repair, reconstruction, or improvement of a structure, the cost of which equals or exceeds fifty percent of the market value of the structure, either A, before the improvement or repair is started, or B, if the structure has been damaged or is being restored before the damage occurred. For the purposes of this definition, substantial improvement is considered to occur when the first alteration of any wall, ceiling, floor, or other structural part of the building commences, whether or not that alteration affects the external dimensions of the structure. Number two, the term does not, however, include either A, any project or improvement of a structure implied with existing state and local health, sanitary, or safety code specifications which are solely necessary to assure safe living conditions, or B, any alteration of a structure listed on the National Register of Historic Places or a state inventory of historic places. Wall, a structure of brick, stone, et cetera, that surrounds an area or separates one area from another. There's a, should be, period. Period there. Yard, open space on a lot or parcel of land unoccupied and unstructured from the ground upward except for encroachment provided for in this title. Section three, Sweet Home Municipal Code subsection seventeen point zero eight point zero three zero eight, entitled General Provisions Regarding Accessory Uses, is hereby deleted. Section four, Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point zero eight point zero three three is to read as follows. A, purpose, fences can create a sense of privacy, protect children and pets, provide separate, separation from business, from busy streets, and enhance the appearance of property. The negative effects of fences can include the creation of street walls that inhibit police and community surveillance, decrease the sense of community, hinder emergency access, lessen solar access, hinder the safe movement of pedestrians and vehicles, and create an unattractive appearance. These standards are intended to promote the positive aspects of fences and to limit the negative ones. B, front yard definition. For purpose, for purposes of this section, front yard means a yard extending across the full width of a lot or parcel of land and extending from the front lot line to the entire actual front building line, or shall be the same as the respective front setbacks required by underlying zone whichever is less. The following standards shall apply to all fences, hedges, and walls. Number C, general standard, construction of fences and walls shall conform to all of the following requirements.
Is that pitching in?
If it records you, we gotta be recording.
Yeah. Number one, all fences, hedges, and walls adjacent to a roadway intersection shall comply with the requirements of Sweet Home, and this will code seventeen point zero eight zero four zero Clear Vision Areas. Number two, the planning commission may require installation of fences or walls and/or fences as a condition of development in a land with approval. On so conditioned by a land use action, no further land use review is required for all fences or walls. Number three, measuring fence height. Fence height shall be measured from the average height of the grade adjacent to where the fence is to be located. If a fence is to be constructed from the top of the berm, the height shall be measured from the bottom of the berm. Where natural grade changes, i.e. hillside or soil, the fence, hedge, and wall height shall change with the grade. Number four, temporary fences. A temporary fence may be constructed with wire, rolled plastic, plastic, wood, or other suitable material as defined by the city manager or designee. The city manager or designee shall establish a time duration for a temporary fence, not to exceed twelve months. All temporary fences prior to installation must have the approval of the city manager or designee. Number five, hedges. Hedges located within five feet of a property line abutting a street shall not exceed a maximum height of three and one-half feet. Number six, gates. Gates shall not open or swing into a public right-of-way. D, materials. Fences and walls shall comply with materials standard set forth in the, in this subsection. Number one, fences. Fences shall be constructed of materials specifically designed and manufactured for defense purposes, including but not limited to wood, wrought iron, vinyl, aluminum, chain link with a top rail support. Materials not specifically designed for fence materials include, but are not limited to corrugated cardboard, corrugated metal, aluminum, wood pellets, concrete, rubble, and junk material where, are prohibited. Number two, walls. Walls shall be constructed of materials specifically designed and manufactured for the use as walls, including but not limited to masonry, rock, concrete, concrete brick, and other similar materials. Number three, hazardous materials. Fences and walls shall not be constructed of or contain any material that will do bodily harm such as electric or barbed wire, broken glass, spikes, or any other hazardous or dangerous materials, except as follows, subsection A. Barbed wire is prohibited, permitted, on the top of a six-foot tall fence in industrial zone. The total height of the fence and barbed wire is limited to seventeen. Barbed wire only fences are prohibited, except for as allowed in subsection one, subsection one, livestock containment. Where cattle, sheep, horses, and other livestock are permitted or existed when the property was annexed into a city, barbed wire is permitted to be used to contain or restrict livestock provided that fences are posted, fences are posted at fifteen foot intervals with clearly visible warnings of hazards. B, electrically charged fences are permitted when used to use pasture or control a livestock or farm, or others who have causal uses in the zone. Where such uses are permitted, the founds dangerous penalty. Number one, on the boundary fence, electrically charged wire shall be located on the inside face of the fence post. Number two, electrically charged fences shall exceed, not exceed, or exceed in height. And, number three, the electrically charged fence shall be a false charge system and not in continuous charge system. And, number four, warning signs that state warning, electric fence shall be posted to intervals not less than fifteen feet.
Location and height, fences and walls should comply with the location and height standards as set forth in this subsection one, residential zoning districts R one, R two, R three, R four, and R M T. The maximum height of a fence and wall within residential zoning district shall be as follows, and as illustrated by figure seventeen point zero eight point zero three three. A, fence height limits in residential zoning districts below. A, fences and walls. One, front yard abutting street, fences and walls within the front yard abutting a street shall not exceed a maximum height of three and one-half, three point five feet when constructed with solid materials, i.e. wood fence, or four feet when constructed with open material, i.e. chain link fence. Two, side and rear yards abutting street, fences and walls located less than three feet from a street property line shall not exceed a maximum height of three and one-half feet when constructed with solid materials, i.e. cedar fence, and four feet when constructed, when, four feet in, when constructed with open material, i.e. chain link fence. Fences and walls constructed more than three feet from the street property line shall not exceed a maximum height of seven feet. Interior side and rear yards, fences and walls located at the property line not abutting a street shall not exceed a maximum height of seven feet. Through lots, fences and walls shall not, shall be constructed in accordance with the front setbacks required by underlying zone on both streets. Flag lots, on flag lots, the maximum height of a front yard fence or wall shall not exceed seven feet, provided the front yard of the flag lot is abutting interior side or rear yards on all sides. Fences and walls located in a portion of, of the pole that abut a front or corner side yard, i.e. from the street property line to the front building line of the issue property or respective front setbacks required by underlying zone whichever is less, shall not exceed a maximum height in, of three and one-half feet when constructed with solid materials, i.e. cedar fence, or four feet when constructed with open material, i.e. chain link fence. Two, non-residential zoning districts. The maximum height of a fence and wall within the commercial C one, C two, C three, and R C in industrial zoning districts M shall be as follows. Fences and walls, yards abutting street, fences and walls located less than five feet from property line shall not exceed a maximum height of three and one-half feet when constructed with solid materials, i.e. cedar fence, or four feet when constructed with open material, i.e. chain link fence. Fences and walls located more than five feet from the street property line shall not exceed a maximum height of seven feet. Interior side and rear yards, fences and walls located at a property line not abutting a street shall not exceed maximum height of seven feet. Purpose, A, purpose, clear vision areas are established to ensure that obstructions do not infringe on the sightlines needed by motors, pedestrian, bicycles, and other approaching potential conflict points at intersections. B, applicability in all zones, clear vision areas as described below in illustrated figure seventeen point oh eight point zero three three A, and figure seventeen point oh eight point zero four zero B. Clear vision areas at the intersection shall be established at the intersection of two streets, an alley and a street, a driveway and a street, or a street and a railroad driveway in order to provide adequate vision of conflicting traffic booms as well as street signs. These standards are applicable to public and private streets, alleys and mid-block lanes, driveway standards, the clear vision areas. C, standards, the clear vision areas extending across the corner of private property from one street to the other, the two legs of the clear vision triangle defining the private property portion of the triangle are each measured twenty feet back from the point of intersection of the two corner lot lines. Special setback line or access easement line where lot lines have rounded corners, the lot lines are extended in a straight line to a point of intersection. Additional clear vision area may be required in intersections, particularly those intersections with acute angles as directed by the city manager or designee upon finding that additional sight distances required, i.e. due to roadway alignment, et cetera. Shall be no solid fence, wall, vehicular parking, landscaping, building structure, or any other obstruction to vision other than a street sign pole, example given, power, signal, or luminaire pole, or tree trunk, clear branches of foliage within the clear vision area between the height of two and eight feet above the grade, measured from the top of the curve where the, where no curve exists, from the established street centerline grade except as follows. D, exceptions. One, in all zones, at the intersection of an alley and a street or a driveway and a street, the minimum length of the two legs of the clear vision triangle, the private property portion shall be ten feet. In all commercial zones, except C one, at the intersection of an alley and a street or driveway and a street, the minimum length of each of the two legs shall be fifteen feet. Three, in the C one zone, the clear vision area does not apply. Four, open chain link fences, which permit disability, shall be allowed in a clear vision area but shall not exceed four feet in height.
Section five, Sweet Home Municipal Code section seventeen point twelve point zero six zeros amended to read as follows. No person shall reconstruct or construct any fence or wall without first of taking any permit, passed by the council and approved by the mayor this blank day of blank two thousand fifteen. Mayor, head, city manager, ex officio, city recorder.
Not to regress, but we did miss, there was a couple issues here. The dog fences, the electric dog fences are not specifically talked about in here. And they are not a high-charge fence, they are a light-charged fence, but they do go inside of the fences for, for dogs. That's not specifically in here under the electric fence.
Yeah, and we could add that.
That's what I was thinking. And, you know, I know some of them are buried in those type of fences, but some of them are temporary fences that people put out for their dogs as they're out in the yard or something, they put out.
Yeah, so temporary fencing is spelled out in that, though?
It is, but it also says that you need to get a permit for the temporary.
Right, and it's a time period, so, yeah.
Yeah, but if somebody's in their yard and put out a temporary, a temporary fence for their dogs or, or something, they, anyway. Dog fences are different because people move them and, and that, so I just think we should, we ought to at least look at that as a, they're not the high, high amperage chargers or anything like that, they're smaller than that.
Right, yeah. I can add one.
I just had one, uh, uh, middle of section five, you read, no person shall construct or reconstruct any fence or wall without first opinion permit. Now, should that be put in there? Because it's not in there.
Correct. Right. But we had talked about it before, for bringing it up. When we talked about it before, that that's what they meant when they said construct, they really meant repair also, so we added the.
Do we need to add that in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we did. But we need to.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So, is there anything else that anybody saw that they missed here? I don't want to do this again.
I definitely don't want to do it right-of-way, maybe.
Okay. So, if there's no further issues there, we'll move that to second reading on September eighth. First reading ordinance bill number ten, two thousand fifteen.
Sweet Home Ordinance prohibiting the sale of limited marijuana retail product and declared emergency, where as section two, chapter seven eighty-four, Oregon laws two thousand fifteen, enrolled Senate Bill four sixty allows medical marijuana dispensaries to sell limited marijuana retail product in print, in quotes, to persons at least twenty-one years of age, beginning October first, two thousand fifteen. And whereas subsection three of that section provides that a city may adopt ordinance prohibiting the sale of limited marijuana retail product in quotes, in, in the area subject to the jurisdiction of the city. And whereas the city count, the Sweet Home City Council desired to prohibit the sale of limited marijuana retail product in quotes, therefore, the city of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section one, in accordance with subsection three of section two, chapter seven eighty-four, Oregon laws, two thousand fifteen, enrolled Senate Bill four sixty, the sale of limited marijuana retail products in quotes, through medical marijuana dispensaries is prohibited in the area subject to the jurisdiction of the city. Section two, the text of this amendment shall be provided to the Oregon Health Authority and the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. Section three, if any section, paragraph, sub, subdivision, clause, sentence, or provision of this ordinance is declared by court or administrative agency being invalid, such declaration shall not affect, impair, invalidate, or nullify the remainder of the ordinance. Section four, the ordinance being necessary for the medium of preservation of the public peace, health, and safety in emergency is declared to exist, and this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force and effect from and after the passage, like council approved by the mayor, passed by the council approved by the blank day of blank two thousand fifteen. Mayor, test, city manager, ex officio, city recorder.
No issues with that, we'll move that forward to second reading on September eighth. First reading ordinance bill number eleven.
Ordinance bill number eleven for two thousand fifteen. Ordinance number, an ordinance permitting Sweet Home Municipal Code chapter twelve point one, two, public park regulations. The city of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section one, Sweet Home Municipal Code section twelve point, twelve point zero one zero, entitled Purpose, is amended to read as follows. Parks of the city are established and maintained as areas of recreation, relaxation, and enjoyment for the public. It is intended that they shall be regulated and used to prevent enjoyment for the maximum number of people engaged in widely, widely diverse interests and activities, as may be practical within the limits of space, design. practical within the limits of space, design, and accommodations available in each park unit. Limitations may be required to ensure use of park areas in safety and to protect the rights of others in surrounding areas. In the parks of the city, the city manager, director, and with prior notice for special events, grant exceptions to the park rules for said event. Sweet Home Municipal Code, section twelve, twelve oh two oh, entitled definition is amended to read as follows: for the purpose of this chapter, alcoholic beverage, any liquid more than one-half of one percent alcohol by volume and capable of being consumed by a human being, bicycle, a device propelled by human power upon which any person may ride, having two tandem wheels of either which is more than fourteen inches in diameter, or having three wheels in contact with the ground, any of which is more than fourteen inches in diameter, cigarette, any product that contains nicotine is intended to be burned or heated under ordinary conditions of use and consists of or contains, A, any roll of tobacco wrapped in a paper or in any substance not containing tobacco, B, tobacco in any form that is functional in the product and that because of its appearance, the type of tobacco used in the filler, or its packaging and labeling is likely to be offered to or purchased by consumers as a cigarette, or any roll of tobacco that is wrapped in any substance containing tobacco and that because of the appearance, type of tobacco used in the filler, or its packaging and labeling is likely to be offered to or purchased by consumers as a cigarette, described in paragraph A of this subsection. City, the city of Sweet Home, community garden land used for the cultivation of fruits, vegetables, plants, flowers are urged by multiple users. Director, person as designated by the city manager immediately charged to park facilities, park areas, and their activities, and to impart attendance of such facilities, areas are responsible. Domesticated animal and animal species or population which has been bred to become accustomed to human provision, control, and care. Highway, every public way, road, street, thoroughfare in place, including bridges, viets, and other structures within the boundaries of this city, open, used.